Good evening.
Good evening.
All of its stairs doing what they're changing.
It's good to go.
Being 6:30, we'll call a meeting to order.
Would you please stand to salute the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Gignac?
Here.
Mr. Hoey?
Here.
Mayor Kennedy?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Takoto?
Here.
Ms. Doherty?
Here.
Mr. Gendron?
Here.
Seven present.
The first item before us is the spotlight on excellence for the Katherine Peace Doc Close and Knowledge Bowl competition for 2017. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, I'd like to invite Carolyn Rochelough, who is our coordinator of after-school and summer school programming, who coordinates the Knowledge Bowl, to come forward to address the community and the school committee, to acknowledge our students who participated in this wonderful event, and our team that is going to represent us outside of Lowell. We had a great competition this year. We had ninety students from nine middle schools, including the new STEM Academy. We had a team of all fifth graders that joined us this year. So, seven nights in March, and I was very appreciative that the school committee members all took time out of their day to serve as judges and to be supportive of our students. Next year will be our thirtieth year, if you can believe it, of hosting Knowledge Bowl in Lowell. It started back in 1988, when I was just finishing college, believe it or not. So, next year will be a really banner year for us. So, this year's competition was particularly exciting because the Daily School was our winner. We also are very appreciative. We're going to introduce the team to you in a moment. But I also want to invite you, on June 12th and 13th, we'll be competing with the Daily School representing Lowell in the regional Knowledge Bowl, in which we have six towns, including Lowell, that will be competing. And it's sponsored by the Lowell Sun, and I will get all of the information to you. Unfortunately, tonight, we had a video planned, and we're having some technical issues that they weren't able to resolve. So, I will be sure to connect with Jack Parnard to get copies of that video to everyone so that you'll be able to see the highlights of the competition. So, at this time, I'd like to introduce Liam Skinner, the principal of the Daily School, who will introduce you to the coaches and to our fantastic team.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank the committee for supporting Knowledge Bowl. We get very excited about athletic competition so often, and it's really a privilege and a joy to be so excited about Knowledge Bowl competition, and competition where it can be really cool to be smart, it can be very exciting to be in competition with other schools. It's a wonderful competition, and I appreciate your continued support of it. I'm also very grateful, tonight, I can keep my remarks short, because I know these students will speak for us and for our school when they have an opportunity to address you. But I would like to thank their parents also. They were very fortunate, and we feel very grateful that the parents entrust their students to us at the Daily School. And when they arrive at the Daily School, I can tell you that they are motivated, and challenged, and encouraged by two really wonderful coaches, who have worked very, very hard to prepare our team, and whom we're very proud of, Karen Miranda and Marcia Downey.
Good evening. Not used to speaking in a microphone. My name is Karen Miranda, and this is Marcia Downey. And we've been coaching the Knowledge Bowl for, I think, eight years together. We love our job, we love working with our students. I think it is one of the most competitive groups that you can join at the Daily. We start off with about seventy students applying. We have days and days of testing to whittle it down to our top ten and a couple alternates. It's a very difficult task, but we love having the opportunity to work with these students, and we love to see how excited they are to come to practice, and as Mr. Skinner said, to show off how smart they are, and to be recognized for that academic success. We'd like to introduce you to the members of the team who are here today. We have our captain, Nate Gier. We have Abby Savoy, eighth grader. Madison Mornau, another eighth grader. Eighth grader Alexa Carolyn. Sam Newteal from our eighth grade. Our youngest team member is Yut Ko, he is in the sixth grade. Eighth grader Judah Mao. Seventh grader Alejandro Bonilla. And seventh grader Jaden Brooks. We also have two other members, Violet Corcoran and Vishwa Divasetti. They were unable to attend tonight, but I want to just mention their names. And Nathan Gier, Abby Savoy, and Madison Mornau would like to share a few words with you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Abby Savoy, and I'm in eighth grade. I'm really glad we won this year, because it was my last year on the Knowledge Bowl team, so I'm glad that we can continue together as a team going to regionals. I would like to thank our coaches, Ms. Downey and Ms. Miranda, for everything they did for us, Ms. Rochelough for coordinating it all, my teammates for being so fun, and the other teams for being such great competitors and supporters when we won. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Madison Mornau, and I'm in the eighth grade. This is my second year on the Knowledge Bowl team, and my favorite part about Knowledge Bowl is all the friends that I have made on the team. We've all gotten very close throughout the year, sharing a lot of memories and knowledge. We are all very excited that we won this year, because it feels great to be recognized for our hard work. I would like to thank our coaches and everyone who worked to put this together, because we couldn't have done it without them. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. So, my name is Nathan Gier, and I've been on my school's Knowledge Bowl team for the past two years. Knowledge Bowl is a wonderful competition that honors academic achievement, and has allowed me to really come out of my shell. In school, my peers really don't understand why I would know a random assortment of facts and must assume that I go home and study for hours every night, but that's really not true. Sorry for being a little bit close to the mic. But Knowledge Bowl's allowed me to meet other kids kind of like me, and who better understand me, so I'm thankful for that. And I'd like to thank the school committee for hosting Knowledge Bowl and for having us here tonight. I'd like to thank my coaches, Ms. Downey and Ms. Miranda, for really pushing me to get here. I'd like to thank Carolyn Rochelough, Ms. Rochelough, for coordinating Knowledge Bowl. I'd like to thank those who've come to the actual meets to support me, or to support anyone else on stage, because it really means a lot to us, I know. And I also really like to thank the Lowell Sun for covering Knowledge Bowl like a regular sports event, and I heard Ms. Rochelough mention that they were actually sponsoring it, which I didn't know, so that's cool too, the regionals. So, I'm thankful for that as well. But most of all, I'd like to thank the other teams for their great sportsmanship. I know last year, when I lost, I was really disappointed, you know? But everyone got up and shook hands anyways, and this year was the same thing. Everyone came up and shook hands with us. The Wang especially was even chanting "Daily" repeatedly when we were getting our pictures taken, so just thanks to everyone, and good night.
Anything from the school committee? Mr. Hoey?
Yes, I would like to just say, I went to as many of those Knowledge Bowls this year as I could. And if the lady that was, I think she was sitting where I am, or where Connie is right now, Catherine Stocklosa, I called her K. Stocklosa. I was on the school committee with her about twenty-three years ago, and if she was here tonight, I'm telling you, she'd turn around and she'd be kissing each one of yous on the cheek. Bring home that Knowledge Bowl for us from the regionals, too, okay? You did a great job, and all I want to say is, the Daily, you make us proud. Thank you very much.
Mr. Gendron?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just would like to echo the comments that Mr. Hoey said. Congratulations to the Daily. You guys represent your school so well, and I think, you know, last week, we had the last meeting, we had the All-Star, the state championship hockey team here. I think it's quite appropriate that we have you guys here to promote how important it is for academics, how important academics is to all of you. So, congratulations. As Mr. Hoey said, good luck in the regionals.
Mr. Takoto?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to echo my colleagues as well, and I was very grateful to be called upon to be a judge at the Knowledge Bowl, and that was terrific. And I'm really just impressed with how much knowledge all of you had, all the teams, and all of the contestants within the teams. Amazing, all of the information that you had, the knowledge that you had, it was terrific. And I congratulate you on job well done, and good luck also in the regionals.
Anybody else? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank our students at the Daily for acknowledging Ms. Rochelough, who has for nearly thirty years actually done this single-handedly, and I don't worry about a thing, because I know she's going to handle it. So, I want to acknowledge our students, you did a phenomenal job, but I want you also to thank you for acknowledging someone who has been dedicated to this and continues to be every year. So, thank you.
And on behalf of the city, and on behalf of the entire school committee, I just would like to congratulate you on a job well done, and wish you the best as you go forward into the regionals. So, congratulations. And thank you. So, we'll move on now to the minutes. Approval of the minutes of the regularly scheduled school committee meeting of Wednesday, April 5, 2017. Chair would entertain a motion to accept and place a file. Move approval, please. By Mr. Gendron, seconded by Mr. Hoey. Discussion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted. Next, under permission to enter, we have approval of the superintendent of school, Dr. Kafawi's contract approval. Mr. Hoey?
Move to approve?
We have a motion to approve. We've seconded the motion by Mr. Takoto. Discussion on the motion. Ms. Doherty?
I thank your honor, I'll be brief. First off, let me say that I have enjoyed working with Dr. Kafawi, and expect he knows that he has my support on many of the key initiatives he's brought forward on behalf of our school district. He will continue to have my support, as we work together to improve our public schools and make efficient use of our resources. That said, I will not be supporting this contract. Aside from general concerns regarding the process, which I won't go into now, there are three specific reasons why I will not be, why I will not be voting for this contract tonight. First, I do not support a four-year contract term that goes into 2020 and binds the next school committee. Second, as my colleagues know, I have concerns regarding the indemnification language in Section 15B, as it pertains to the superintendent being able to retain independent legal counsel at the expense of the committee. And third, I do not support a contract that has built-in annual increases totaling ten percent over the life of the contract without regard to evaluation measures or district resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I would just say that I won't be supporting the contract either, and it is very specific in terms of my concerns with the language within the contract itself. I will echo those concerns of a built-in pay raise when we have no capacity to make that same kind of commitment across the district. The four-year term is something that I had concerns about, as you all know, over the course of time. You know, and the third area where I have concerns is in the attachment language that really, I think, took some steps to curtail the ability of this committee to be able to communicate freely, both with the public and with the, you know, and communicating it with the superintendent. So, recognizing that we'll all be moving forward, working together, that's, I think we're all looking forward to that, but I won't be able to support the contract as it stands. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Mr. Hoey?
Yes, I'd just like to say, I went to as many of those Knowledge Bowls this year as I could. And if the lady that was, I think she was sitting where I am, or where Connie is right now, Kathleen Stocklosa, I called her K. Stocklosa. I was on the school committee with her about twenty-three years ago, and if she was here tonight, I'm telling you, she'd turn around and she'd be kissing each one of yous on the cheek. Bring home that Knowledge Bowl for us from the regionals, too, okay? You did a great job, and all I want to say is, the Daily, you make us proud. Thank you very much.
Mr. Gendron?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just would like to echo the comments that Mr. Hoey said. Congratulations to the Daily. You guys represent your school so well, and I think, you know, last week, we had the last meeting, we had the All-Star, the state championship hockey team here. I think it's quite appropriate that we have you guys here to promote how important it is for academics, how important academics is to all of you. So, congratulations. As Mr. Hoey said, good luck in the regionals.
Mr. Takoto?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to echo my colleagues as well, and I was very grateful to be called upon to be a judge at the Knowledge Bowl, and that was terrific, and I'm really just impressed with how much knowledge all of you had, all the teams, and all of the contestants within the teams. Amazing, all of the information that you had, the knowledge that you had, it was terrific. And I congratulate you on job well done, and good luck also in the regionals.
Anybody else? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank our students at the Daily for acknowledging Ms. Rochelough, who has for nearly thirty years actually done this single-handedly, and I don't worry about a thing, because I know she's going to handle it. So, I want to acknowledge our students, you did a phenomenal job, but I want you also to thank you for acknowledging someone who has been dedicated to this and continues to be every year. So, thank you.
And on behalf of the city, and on behalf of the entire school committee, I just would like to congratulate you on a job well done, and wish you the best as you go forward into the regionals. So, congratulations. And thank you. So, we'll move on now to the minutes. Approval of the minutes of the regularly scheduled school committee meeting of Wednesday, April 5, 2017. Chair would entertain a motion to accept and place a file. Move approval, please. By Mr. Gendron, seconded by Mr. Hoey. Discussion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted. Next, under permission to enter, we have approval of the superintendent of school, Dr. Kafawi's contract approval. Mr. Hoey?
Move to approve?
We have a motion to approve. We've seconded the motion by Mr. Takoto. Discussion on the motion. Ms. Doherty?
I thank your honor, I'll be brief. First off, let me say that I have enjoyed working with Dr. Kafawi, and expect he knows that he has my support on many of the key initiatives he's brought forward on behalf of our school district. He will continue to have my support, as we work together to improve our public schools and make efficient use of our resources. That said, I will not be supporting this contract. Aside from general concerns regarding the process, which I won't go into now, there are three specific reasons why I will not be, why I will not be voting for this contract tonight. First, I do not support a four-year contract term that goes into 2020 and binds the next school committee. Second, as my colleagues know, I have concerns regarding the indemnification language in Section 15B, as it pertains to the superintendent being able to retain independent legal counsel at the expense of the committee. And third, I do not support a contract that has built-in annual increases totaling ten percent over the life of the contract without regard to evaluation measures or district resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I would just say that I won't be supporting the contract either, and it is very specific in terms of my concerns with the language within the contract itself. I will echo those concerns of a built-in pay raise when we have no capacity to make that same kind of commitment across the district. The four-year term is something that I had concerns about, as you all know, over the course of time. You know, and the third area where I have concerns is in the attachment language that really, I think, took some steps to curtail the ability of this committee to be able to communicate freely, both with the public and with the, you know, and communicating it with the superintendent. So, recognizing that we'll all be moving forward, working together, that's, I think we're all looking forward to that, but I won't be able to support the contract as it stands. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Mr. Hoey?
Yes, I'd just like to say that I'm very supportive of this contract. I was the one that brought the motion forward to give this gentleman a contract. Sitting here a year and two months right now, I'm glad I did it. We had what they called a memorandum of understanding on him, and he accepted it at that time, which I'm glad he did, because he wouldn't be here today if he didn't. And I don't think a superintendent of a school system of sixteen thousand children should be going around without a contract, and I also think a superintendent that has a system this large, what we're paying him right now is a bargain. So, with that said, I am going to be very supportive of this, and I will continue to work as hard as I can for the superintendent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Gendron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This contract brings much-needed and long overdue stability to Lowell Public Schools. Yes, it's technically a four-year contract, but it starts a year ago, so really, it's a three-year contract from this point forward. It's merely semantics that we were calling it a four-year contract from this point forward, or from July 1 forward, it's three years. But again, this stability in the corner office is something that I've been talking about since I came onboard this school committee, and I'm happy now that we finally have solidified that with a contract. I think that, you know, we all agreed in our last evaluation that the superintendent's doing a good job. I think that we all gave him high marks. He wouldn't be getting this contract without that. And just to name a few things, we've seen testing results go up, we've seen the dropout rate go down, two years in a row, the lowest dropout rate in the history of the school district, lower than any other urban community in Massachusetts. He's assembled what I think is a very strong team in his administrative staff, and I think that, you know, that's the mark of a true leader. A smart and good leader knows how to surround himself with great people, and I believe that he's done that in his administrative staff. And he's proven himself. I think he deserves a contract, and, you know, I've been a supporter of contracts from day one. I think that every superintendent in the state of Massachusetts has a contract. If we want to be competitive and draw the best leaders to this city, to this school department, then we need to provide a contract, and this contract is a fair one. There are some really good things about this contract. Number one, we've eliminated sick leave buyback. That's something that no superintendent in the history of the city of Lowell has ever agreed to. We've eliminated it in this contract, and I think we're setting a precedent going forward. So, those, you know, six-figure buyouts for sick leave that we've seen superintendents leave with in the past, that's not going to happen with the superintendent, and it's not going to happen anymore, if I have anything to say about it. It also limits vacation time to a reasonable level, so that, you know, there won't be a huge vacation payout either. And it provides the school committee a means to remove the superintendent for good cause, with proper notice. So, we still have control if the situation is such that the superintendent should have to be removed, not that I think that would be the case with Superintendent Kafawi. And it requires notice from the superintendent of his intent to leave, significant notice of his intent to leave, something we didn't have under memorandum of understanding. From a salary perspective, you know, it's a lot of money, let's face it. For this fiscal year that we're currently in, this contract sets the salary at $189,000. Yes, that's a lot of money. It's a big salary, but it's a big job, and if we compare that salary to salaries across the state for other cities across the state, we see, this is for fiscal year sixteen, a year ago, so they're all probably higher now. Brockton has $220,000, Cambridge $228,000 plus bonus, Lynn $207,000, Worcester $200,000 plus paid benefits and an annuity, Framingham, a much smaller city, $215,000. And if we just look locally, Chelmsford $175,000, Methuen $167,000, Westford $190,000 in fiscal 17. So, this truly is a fair contract. When you look at the size of the district, the responsibilities of this district, the number of students in this district, from a salary perspective and a benefit perspective, I believe it's a fair contract. Hey, it's a negotiation. There's a few things in this contract I don't like either. If I had my way, I would have, I would have taken them out, but it's give and take. When you look at the contract on balance, it's a good, fair contract, and I want to actually thank the mayor for his leadership. It's been a long time, this has been a long negotiation, but I believe the mayor did a good job in pulling us together and finally getting a contract that we could all agree to. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I think it's a fair contract, and I look forward to better things in the years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, roll call.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
No.
Mr. Takoto?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
No.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Five yeas, two nay, passes.
The next order of business is the contract for the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum.
Move to approve?
I think we're meeting on this on Monday.
I'm so excited that he just got his contract, I wanted to give her one, too. I'm sorry, I made another mistake.
Chair would entertain a motion to delay until the next meeting, by Mr. Takoto, seconded by Mr. Gendron. Discussion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted. Next is permission to enter. In general, do we have a motion to approve? Mr. Gignac, motion to approve, seconded by Mr. Takoto. Any discussion? Mr. Gignac?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Mr. Frisch. Mr. Frisch, included in this permission to enter is a rather large transportation contract, and it looks like it increases by about a million dollars over the duration as compared to the existing contract, which is concerning. Can you, can you provide the finance committee the actual bid?
Sure, be happy to.
Okay, thank you. I'd just like to dig into it a little deeper. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion on the permission to enter? If not, roll call.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Takoto?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Next, under memorials, we have several memorials. The first is James R. Cassidy, father of Michael Cassidy, Assistant Business Manager. Also, Patrick Christopher Sullivan, son of Washington School Food Service Staff Kelly Sullivan. And for Beverly Soucy, mother of Green House School Clerk Donna St. Laurent. That's it, those four. Next, under motions, the first motion is by, is by Mr. Hoey. Requested superintendent to establish a task force in collaboration with city administration to review, revise, and recommend a new maintenance of efforts agreement, seconded by Ms. Doherty.
Thank you.
Mr. Hoey?
Thanks, Mayor. I got this idea about three weeks ago on my favorite TV show, City Life, in the morning when Jay Lang, our ex-CFO, was on there with Mr. Gignac, and I made a call to the TV station and asked him when the last time someone did this. The agreement was written, the maintenance of effort agreement was written about ten years ago, and Jay Lang was the person that did write it. So, I think ten years, a lot of things change, and I think we have to take a look at it and get it written again. So, that's the only reason why I brought this motion up. I think it's a big part of what we've talked about all year long, and we're about to go into the budget, and I just think it's something that should be done. The city side, we have a lot of people on that side that are ex-mayors, were on the schools, and I think if you put the right people together with the city side, you'll come up with a great, great agreement, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Doherty?
Thank your honor. I'd just like to thank my colleague for putting this motion here. I had had a motion, I want to say it was a couple of months now, asking for more detailed reports on the expenses on the city side for these indirect costs, and as far as I know, we really never got a detailed report, did we? Because I didn't see anything. I think this is a great next step, to really look at the whole agreement and see where we might be able to make some improvements and have more efficient use of our very precious dollars. So, I fully support this motion, and I would like to offer my services to be part of that task force if there's any need for people volunteering. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor of the motion, all opposed, so voted. The next motion is by Ms. Doherty, request that the superintendent provide the committee with a report that compares the district's performance on state-required standardized tests over the last three years with similar urban communities. The report should highlight all areas of particular growth and weakness, as well as specify the efforts and goals for improvement. Seconded by Mr. Hoey. Ms. Doherty?
I thank your honor. I think that my colleagues and I have all shared that frustration. When people grade our school system on that single test score number and where we fall in the state, so I'm really looking for a comparison of how we do with similar districts that have the same challenges that we have. So, this, I'm looking for a report, and actually, I would love it if it could be a presentation to the committee that we could really dig deep into how we fare against other urban districts, because I suspect we do very well. So, I'm looking for, looking back three years, but also as we go forward, to establish smart goals for ourselves as a district. What are we, you know, what are we looking to achieve? How are we looking to improve on the scores of our students? So, that would, I would like to see that part of the report as well. I think it would be useful information for us to share with our community and with each other in terms of moving forward with the standardized testing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gendron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is an excellent idea.
Want to be competitive and draw the best leaders to this city, to this school department, then we need to provide a contract. And this contract is a fair one. There are some really good things about this contract. Number one, we've eliminated sick leave buyback. That's something that no superintendent in the history of the city of Lowell has ever agreed to. We've eliminated it in this contract, and I think we're setting a precedent going forward. So those, you know, six-figure buyouts for sick leave that we've seen superintendents leave with in the past, that's not going to happen with the superintendent, and it's not going to happen anymore if I have anything to say about it. It also limits vacation time to a reasonable level so that, you know, there won't be a huge vacation payout either. And it provides the school committee a means to remove the superintendent for good cause with proper notice. So we still have control if the situation is such that the superintendent should have to be removed. Not that I think that would be the case with Superintendent Calphoury. And it requires notice from the superintendent of his intent to leave. Significant notice of his intent to leave, something we didn't have under Memorandum of Understanding. From a salary perspective, you know, it's a lot of money. Let's face it. For this fiscal year that we're currently in, this contract sets the salary at $189,000. Yes, that's a lot of money. It's a big salary, but it's a big job. And if we compare that salary to salaries across the state for other cities across the strait state, we see this is for fiscal year 16. A year ago, so they're all probably higher now, Brockton has $220,000, Cambridge $228,000 plus bonus, Lynn $207,000, Worcester $200,000 plus paid benefits and an annuity. Framingham, a much smaller city, $215,000. And if we just look locally, Chelmsford $175,000, Methuen $167,000, Westford $190,000 in fiscal 17. So this truly is a fair contract. When you look at the size of the district, the responsibilities of this district, the number of students in this district, from a salary perspective and a benefit perspective, I believe it's a fair contract. Hey, it's a negotiation. There's a few things in this contract I don't like either. If I had my way, I would have, I would have taken them out. But it's give and take. When you look at the contract on balance, it's a good, fair contract, and I want to actually thank the mayor for his leadership. It's been a long time, this has been a long negotiation, but I believe the mayor did a good job in pulling us together and finally getting a contract that we could all agree to. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's a fair contract, and I look forward to better things in the years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, roll call.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
No.
Mr. Decodo?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
No.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Five yeas, two nay, passes.
The next order of business is the contract for the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum.
Move to approve.
I think we're meeting on this on Monday.
I'm so excited that he just got his contract. I wanted to give her one too. I'm sorry, I made another mistake.
Chair would entertain a motion to delay until the next meeting by Mr. Decodo, second by Mr. Gendron. Discussion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted. Next is permission to enter. In general, do we have a motion to approve? Mr. Gignac, motion to approve, second by Mr. Decodo. Any discussion? Mr. Gignac.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Mr. Frisch. Mr. Frisch, included in this permission to enter is a rather large transportation contract, and it looks like it increases by about a million dollars over the duration as compared to the existing contract, which is concerning. Can you, can you provide the Finance Committee the actual bid?
Sure. Be happy to.
Okay. Thank you. I'd just like to dig into it a little deeper. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion on the permission to enter? If not, roll call.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Decodo?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Next, under memorials, we have several memorials. The first is James R. Cassidy, father of Michael Cassidy, Assistant Business Manager. Also Patrick Christopher Sullivan, son of Washington School Food Service Staff Kelly Sullivan. And for Beverly Soucy, mother of Greenhouse School Clerk Donna St. Laurent. That's it. Those four. to establish a task force in collaboration with city administration to review, revise, and recommend a new maintenance of efforts agreement. Second by, second by Ms. Doherty.
Thank you.
Mr. Hoi.
Thanks, Mayor. I got this idea about three weeks ago on my favorite TV show, City Life, in the morning when Jay Lang, our ex-CFO, was on there with Mr. Gignac. And I made a call to the TV station and asked them when the last time someone did this. The agreement was written, the maintenance of effort agreement was written about 10 years ago, and Jay Lang was the person that did write it. So I think 10 years, a lot of things change, and I think we have to take a look at it and get it written again. So that's the only reason why I brought this motion up. I think it's a big part of what we've talked about all year long, and we're about to go into the budget, and I just think it's something that should be done. The city side, we have a lot of people on that side that are ex-mayors, were on the schools, and I think if you put the right people together with the city side, you'll come up with a great, great agreement. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to thank my colleague for putting this motion here. I had had a motion, I want to say it was a couple of months now, asking for more detailed reports on the expenses on the city side for these indirect costs, and as far as I know, we really never got a detailed report, did we? Because I didn't see anything. I think this is a great next step, to really look at the whole agreement and see where we might be able to make some improvements and have more efficient use of our very precious dollars. So I fully support this motion, and I would like to offer my services to be part of that task force if there's any need for people volunteering. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor of the motion, all opposed, so voted. The next motion is by Ms. Doherty, request that the superintendent provide the committee with a report that compares the district's performance on state-required standardized tests over the last three years with similar urban communities. The report should highlight all areas of particular growth and weakness, as well as specify the efforts and goals for improvement. Second by, second by Mr. Hoi. Ms. Doherty?
I thank you, Your Honor. I think that my colleagues and I have all shared that frustration. When people grade our school system on that single test score number and where we fall in the state, so I'm really looking for a comparison of how we do with similar districts that have the same challenges that we have. So this, I'm looking for a report, and actually, I would love it if it could be a presentation to the committee that we could really dig deep into how we fare against other urban districts, because I suspect we do very well. So I'm looking for, looking back three years, but also as we go forward, to establish smart goals for ourselves as a district. What are we, you know, what are we looking to achieve? How are we looking to improve on the scores of our students? So that would, I would like to see that part of the report as well. I think it would be useful information for us to share with our community and with each other in terms of moving forward with the standardized testing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gendron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is an excellent idea. I, like probably everybody here, it grinds me when I see reports that show Lowell, you know, at the bottom of the barrel when it comes to standardized testing. It doesn't reflect the types of challenges the district has, and that's not an excuse. We need to strive to be the best no matter what. However, if we're going to be comparing test scores, we ought to be comparing apples to apples. So I think having that information would be a real asset to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion, Mr. Hoi?
Yes, real quick. I think the motion's a fabulous motion, because every time you do get questioned about MCAS or PACT test, and they rank you as 263rd in the state out of 351 cities, and then someone will say to you, and Chelmsford's number, I think it's 40. There's no way you can compare those type of towns to a city like this. I think the staff, and I've only been sitting here for a year and two months now, I think, I'm so impressed with the school system, I'm absolutely out of my mind over it. I just think that if we just keep going with the school committee right now, the way we are, another 10 months, I'm going to be able to bring a beautiful debate to the city, and I hope about six or seven more people enter the race. I think when you gave pay raises out to all of us, it's going to attract some people, some good talented people, that want to be sitting here. So I think you did something good there, and I think your motion is fabulous. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let me just point out that I didn't give out the pay raises.
No, 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 no. It was your idea, buddy. It was your idea. And let me tell you something. You deserve your pay raise for what you've done this year. Don't think you don't.
The pay raises, thank you very much. Pay raises for the next, the next school committee, next city council.
Okay.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, all opposed, so voted. Next, under subcommittees, we have the Joint Curriculum and Student Support Services. Mr. Gignac?
I wonder if we could defer reporting out on that, because I didn't, I didn't get the minutes either.
Chair would entertain a motion to delay action until the next meeting?
If that's okay.
So moved.
Thank you.
We have a motion, motion by Ms. Doherty, second by Mr. Decodo, all in favor, all opposed, so voted. Under new business, we have a budget transfer. We have a motion to approve the budget transfer by Mr. Gignac, second by Mr. Hoi. Discussion on the transfer. Ms. Martin?
I'm sorry, if I could ask, if you could just give us a brief verbal discussion, because again, I wasn't able to get to it, so.
Yeah. Okay. Be happy to provide some background regarding this budget transfer. The building principals have several accounts, so what we're asking for in this budget transfer is money $3,437, increasing the professional development account, and then decreasing the general supplies and library media, together totaling $3,437. By allowing this transfer, we can direct the city auditor to make the change, and then thereby allowing the principal to make a purchase requisition against the professional development account.
Any further discussion? Roll call on this?
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Decodo?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Next is a recommended budget for fiscal year 2017, 2018. We'll begin with the budget presentation. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been, we've been working at this for quite a while, and have been several iterations of this as we had different numbers coming from the state. And tonight, what we have available for you is a short presentation that kind of captures the essence of this budget. We also have the, the budget has been posted over 48 hours ago on our website, and if anyone is not able to download it or would like to have a print copy, just come over to the office, we'll be happy to provide you with one. And on this note, I will turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Frisch.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the school committee, and citizens of Lowell. Before we begin with the presentation, it is important to note that this budget process was very inclusive, was seeking input from department heads and building principals. I want to thank people in the business office for their important contributions in assembling and compiling the budget, including Mike Cassidy, Jackie Keller-Hur Roy, and Mary Bader. So without further ado, let's begin. The budget overview, Chapter 70 is the Commonwealth's School Finance Statute and provides the kindergarten through grade 12 net school spending requirement for all school districts in the state of Massachusetts. The legislative intent of this law is to appropriate in a share, fair, and adequate minimum per student funding for public schools. Net school spending is comprised of the foundation enrollment of $16,025 multiplied by the foundation budget per pupil of $11,849, which totals $189,892,000. It is important to note that each public school in the Commonwealth has their own foundation budget per pupil, depending on the unique composition of students. There are different costs for regular ed students, special ed students, and L students. And there are different costs for each grade level. So they take the composition of all the students within your district and come up with a foundation budget per pupil. Chapter 70 and local aid comprise the total budget, or the total net school spending. Lowell Public Schools are funded 76% from the state and 24% locally. The local aid comes in two parts, non-cash contributions and cash contributions. City contribution provides $18 million of cash, and the contributed cash is determined by the city manager, and for this year, it amounts to $18,500,000. The city of Lowell provides non-cash contributions and is estimated, based on prior years, to be $35 million. Items paid on behalf of the schools, for example, heat and electric, they're paid by the city, but they're for the heating and electricity within the schools. Cash contributions of $18 million are reduced for transportation costs and adult education costs, which are the responsibility of the city of Lowell and are not part of net school spending. The cash of $8.4 million is the net result after subtracting transportation and adult education cost. On this next slide is a graph showing the comparison from previous years to the, to the budget year, and you'll notice a decrease of $3.1 million that, for net cash, comparing 2016-17, the current year, to the next budget year. So a decrease of $3.1 million. 2017-18 operating budget is comprised of two amounts, Chapter 78 of $144 million plus contributed cash from the city of $18 million, totals $162,73,000. The amount, it's important to note that the amount for Chapter 78 uses the House appropriation for Lowell Public Schools. This number is subject to change as it winds its way through the legislature. Now, let's talk about budget increases, and we'll go through each one in further detail. We have added new educational programs to the budget, as well as increased the budget cost to existing programs based on the latest information we have to date. There are some elementary and middle schools in our school system that have full-time math resource teachers, and other schools with a half-time math resource teacher. Our goal was to provide equity in staffing throughout the school system. By adding four math resource teachers, we can provide full-time support at additional seven elementaries and one middle school. Let me ask my colleague, Robyn Desmond, to further elaborate on this.
So as Mr. Frisch had mentioned, the four FTEs would be able to allow us to provide to eight schools, one middle school, and four, seven elementary schools, full-time math resource coaches, math resource teachers, which are coaches within the buildings. This will allow us to provide more sustained coaching and PD to all of the staff in all of our schools. Currently, this model that we have where we're sharing the position, a math resource teacher may be servicing a significantly large, or two significantly large, elementary schools, going back and forth, maybe one week on, one week off. So in order to provide better streamlined professional development and coaching, we would like to have someone on-site full-time at every elementary and every middle school.
The next addition is we're planning on adding four CSA classrooms, pre-K classrooms. Now, CSA is classrooms for students with autism. This will avoid, by adding the four pre-K classrooms, it will avoid us spending over $2 million in out-of-district tuition costs. So if we didn't do this, we would be sending our students to out-of-district placements, representing a total cost of $2 million, in excess of $2 million. Let me turn it over to Janine, my colleague, to further elaborate on this.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch. This past December, actually, December 28th, our Director of Special Education, Jen from McChrystal, who's here this evening, presented an update to the school committee that provided extensive detail relative to our special education population, and specifically targeted our increase in our students with autism in the district. In particular, she highlighted the immediate need for our pre-K students who were coming into the district in large numbers, and we had not anticipated that. Each year, we project out and we, we roll in anticipated cost changes, but these numbers were coming in that we hadn't anticipated. At that time, we requested additional classrooms for children with autism, and we are extremely grateful to the committee that, that you voted to increase those classrooms for our children this year so that we could maintain our students in district. Since that time, we've added two additional CSA classes, allowing us to maintain our students in the district, and at this time, those classes, I would like to tell you, are at capacity. The third pre-K classroom that we discussed with the school committee, we've included in this 2017-18 budget. We've done some really creative thinking around trying to maintain our students in district, but we do need that additional third pre-K classroom this year. The other three classes that are presented in this slide that are included in the budget are needed to accommodate our students as they go up in grade level. So we have high numbers of our students at the elementary level, and as they transition to a higher grade, we need to build our internal capacity to reduce the change of needing to sending, sending our students out of district placements. This is based on our current out-of-district tuition costs, and if we were to send these children out of district, we would be looking at $2.2 million compared to the $767,000 cost for the salaries that we are presenting in this current budget. Students with autism require some additional supports. They require smaller classrooms, additional supports, a more structured environment. And if we are, in order to support the children, you'll see that we have in the budget one Certified Occupational Therapist Assistant and one Speech Language Assistant. These people really are, are a really important necessity to be able to maintain our children and support their learning as they main, they stay in our district. So that is the, I'm trying to maneuver the slides and talk, so bear with me. So additionally, when we came to you in December, we informed you that we have been working to advance a proposal for a CSA day school, which would allow us to keep our students in district, and it would allow us to provide that smaller class size of support that students needed. Opening a day school allows us to service these students in district, further reducing our out-of-district costs. Taking into consideration all of the state regulations around day schools and the requirements that are combined with our need, and this is really important, with our need to support our students based on what their IEP says, we are recommending the staffing list that you see on the slide, and you also have included in the budget. With these staff, we're able for next year to service approximately 50 students, 47 to 50 students. This includes us returning some students from out-of-district placements, which have been very cost prohibitive for us at times. Now, that being said, we, we know that our IEP process revolves around a team meeting that we would reconvene our teams, our, our parents would be consulted, and with their consent, our children would be brought back. I have to tell you that our, our parents want their children to remain in Lowell. So I, although I can't make a prediction, I do believe that, wholeheartedly, that we can bring students back to the district.
Would you, yeah, I just want to point out that Ms. Durkin talked about returning some students back to the school district.
I'll talk about that one.
We're estimating that to be about $1.4 million, so the long-range plan is very cost-effective. Moving on to the Rogers STEM expansion, we are anticipating another 100 students. Our plan is to increase the Rogers by two strands for fifth grade and two strands at the sixth grade. We will need another teacher for physical education in addition to the four classroom teachers we'll need. Finally, a guidance counselor is needed for the STEM Academy, since we will have 150 middle school students at the Rogers STEM Academy. The total costs are adding up to $335,000. Moving on to transportation, this, as you know, we had in the permission to enter a bid that we're asking the school committee for us to be able to enter into a contract from the bid. Bid came in higher than anticipated. We'll go through that in our finance subcommittee. But the district went out for bid for regular transportation services. The costs are projected to be $9 million, which includes special education transportation costs. This results, unfortunately, in an increase of $1.2 million over the current year. These costs are the responsibility of the city of Lowell, because it is paid from the school's budget, and no additional cash is provided. These increases are really a reduction in cash contributions. Moving to the next category, health insurance is another big driver of the budget, and the total increase here is $1.3 million. There are three primary factors that are causing a large increase in health insurance. A 4.8% increase in insurance rates, that sounds mild compared to previous increases, but never but nevertheless, that causes an increase of $900,000. A net increase of 20 additional employees after adding all the employees for the CSA day school and four classrooms and the other increases we talked about in staffing. We'll talk about some budget or staffing reductions, but the net effect is about 20 additional employees, which creates an additional cost for health insurance of approximately $200,000. And then finally, the reduction of grant funding of 4% from Title I, that will create less opportunities to offset health insurance since we'll have less money that we're receiving. Now let's talk about some budget decreases, and we'll cover each of these categories on further slides as we move forward. First one is maintenance. And in years past, the school department paid for maintenance positions such as heating, maintenance at LHS, Energy Management System Monitor, as well as two plumbing positions. However, the Maintenance of Effort Agreement with the city states that the City of Lowell covers the operations and maintenance of the buildings. Thus, we are eliminating these positions from the budget, thereby saving some cash. Moving right along to the next one.
Something's happening.
A little technical difficulties here.
It's not showing.
There you go.
Nope, it's freezing.
Well, no problem. Thank you for doing this. Personnel reductions, let's talk about. Clerical and the psychologists and the district support positions have a staff member who is retiring. When we have to reduce costs, we look at positions who have a person retiring first because an employee is not losing a job. The Director of Alternative Education is moving to a new position within the district. We had a meeting, moving to the 23 library aide positions, they'll take some time to explain this. We had a meeting with the principals and solicited feedback on this reduction of 23 library aides. It turns out that 11 schools use the library aides as intended for their job description, while 12 schools are using the positions for other purposes. And when talking with the HR director, she has talked individually with each library aide person, staff member, and have signed up all but three to work as paraprofessionals. As you know, from the CSA day school and the four additional CSA classrooms, we're adding approximately 35 paraprofessional positions. So these 23 library aide positions will be able to fold right into the paraprofessional positions, and all but three are choosing to do so. Three are choosing to retire. There have been no complaints, and in essence, this reduction is really a realignment of duties which give the principals more options to utilize the 23 paraprofessionals in working with students. The library aide position prevented the staff member from working with students alone without a teacher, so greater flexibility. And I'll ask my colleague, Ann Sheehy, to further elaborate.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch. Really, just to reiterate what you already stated, this is really a proposed strategic realignment. We currently have 23 library aides, three are filled with substitutes, and three of those positions are pending retirement, so this affects 17 staff members. The current library aide job description, as Mr. Frisch said, is somewhat prohibitive, and it limits our ability to work with our students. So this strategic move really allows us to better meet the needs of our students.
Moving right along, the school resource officers. School resource officers are covered under the Maintenance of Effort Agreement with the city. There are currently six resource officers funded through the Maintenance of Effort Agreement. The budget includes to transfer three that are currently on our budget, transfer them to the Maintenance of Effort Agreement to be funded by the City of Lowell. The purpose is to have a consistent method of funding the SROs, School Resource Officers, and preserving cash. We have asked the city manager to fund all nine under the Maintenance of Agreement. We'd like to reiterate, we mentioned returning some students from out-of-district placements. Just want to recap it here as a budget decrease. Students returning from out-of-district placements, we have 19 students with autism that we can bring back to be housed in our school program. That would represent a savings of $1.4 million. Oh, okay. I've been nudged to turn it over to Janine, the expert in this area.
Actually, I have the experts in the audience, but earlier this evening, I did speak to you relative to additional cost savings that bringing back students in our CSA day program could actually bring to the district. The anticipated cost savings that we see, and I think Mr. Frisch alluded to it, for returning students is $1.4 million. So that is on top of the $2 million that we're anticipating if we actually institute a day school for our CSA classrooms in Lowell. Additionally, we have made plans to restructure grade configurations at our two therapeutic settings in the district. That's our Laurel Lee and LeBlanc schools. This year, we had a graduation of 13 seniors from the Laurel Lee, which is very, very exciting. But this will open up some spaces. So what we're proposing to do is to go back to something we had in years past that we reconfigured because of numbers. We are looking at moving our grade eight from the LeBlanc to the Laurel Lee, and so we would have our students up through grade eight at the Laurel Lee, and then this would open up some additional spots at the LeBlanc. That being said, we have students who are in out-of-district placements for emotionally behavioral needs that may be in a place to step down from their current out-of-district placements and be able to come back to the district. So they could come back both to the LeBlanc and the Laurel Lee with this reconfiguration, which is no cost to us, but actually bringing the students back based on the team meetings and the parent consent, we anticipate this being a real positive for our students, and also seeing some cost savings of close to $360,000 for doing that. Additionally, we have students that because of our current summer school offerings for our special ed population, that we have to send out of district. So reconfiguring our summer school offerings for our students, we'd be able to bring back some students to the district, and even with just bringing back a small number of those students, we could conceivably have upwards of $85,000 in increases that we see reflected with bringing those students back. Bottom line is, we know that we do a good job in the system for our children, and our goal is to keep our students in the system. So this work, I commend our special ed department for all the work they've done on this. I think it's to be commended. Also, at present, I think that's it.
Okay, moving right along here to the revenue summary. We're winding down our presentation here. We have a budget increase from the current year to the next year of $3.6 million, from $158 million to $162 million and change, 158.4 to 162 million. Moving on to the balance, to the next slide, we have, in fact, a balanced budget. The balanced budget includes $1 million set aside in the suspense account for staff salaries. The detailed budget is located on the district's webpage, includes grant salaries of $9 million, not included in the operating budget, and revolving funds that are restricted of $6.4 million, and they're restricted for a specific purpose. The budget has been a collaborative process, transparent, and provides the best use of funds to support the educational priorities of the Lowell Public Schools. This concludes our budget presentation.
So it would be the chair's intention to open up the public hearing this evening, and then, I don't know if it's the wish of the body to go forward, but not to close the public hearing, so we would suspend the public hearing so that at subsequent meetings, the public would still be able to provide input. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could I ask a couple of clarifying questions on the proposal before we move on to the public hearing? Thank you. First of all, Ms. Durkin, can you get that presentation back up there? I know it's been a little bit.
That's going to be tricky.
If you can't, it's okay. We can just use our imagination. Right at the very beginning, the one about local aide from the city? Yeah, that chart.
It's, you've got it.
You passed it. The chart, the bar chart there.
This one?
Nope, keep going. Yeah, there it is. That's the one. Thank you. So this indicates that the City of Lowell is giving us $3.1 million less than they did last year. Is that correct?
If I may.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, no, the City of Lowell is not giving you less $3.1 billion. The City of Lowell is giving you $3.1 billion less in net cash because the contribution of the city is made up of cash and noncash contributions. Because of the increases that they had on their side of charter schools and other increases there, and so the net effect to us, because when we get $18 million from the city this year, and first of all, as you can see from previous chart, we're not getting as much as we're getting this year. When we get that kind of cash, we have to pay out of that transportation, one of the biggest, which is not part of the net school spending, which the state orders the cities in town to pay toward net school spending. So when we pay that transportation, the remaining cash only is what qualifies toward net school spending.
I see.
This year, we have been hit with a $1.2 million transportation increase, and since the city is not providing that additional $1.2, it created an overall effect of $3.1 million less in cash towards, because in our, for our budget, our budget is made of the cash we get from the state, which is $144 million, and the cash that we get from the city. So the cash that from the state went up, but the cash from the city went down, and the overall is that $3 million that we have on top.
I see. Some of the expenses that are covered by the city have increased significantly, which means the net cash that we get after those expenses are paid is decreased accordingly.
Last year, the city's net school spending contribution was about $6 million over the minimum. Next year, it will be about $3 million over the minimum.
Okay. So that was the other part. So they actually, even if you, all things being equal, if you lump the expenses that get paid by the city and the cash that comes from the city together, we're still seeing a decrease by about $6 million?
The decrease is with respect to the required minimum net school spending.
Okay. So the city's meeting their requirement.
They are.
Last year, they were just a little bit more generous in what they gave us. So in effect, we are getting less from the city this time around.
And the reason where our budget, we had to go and found the decreases to compensate, I mean, the reductions in our budget to compensate for that, because our budget is made out of cash.
Right.
We need the cash to continue, and even if we maintain things completely level, completely level, without doing anything, we would have required $2 million more just to pay for the $1.2 million of insurance and then $800,000 of steps. So when you count, you add to that the $1.2 of transportation, so you're already way ahead. Before we start doing any program changes or improvement, we need at least $3 million, more than $3 million to just be level in comparison to last year or the current year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
My other question is relative to the library aides.
Yes.
So you said there were no complaints.
Right.
I have received a couple of complaints, so I don't think that's completely true, but it may be misinformation. So I just had a couple of questions. Are we planning to close libraries in any of our schools?
No. I think, and I'd like to speak to that because, yes, there were complaints before we got the message out. The process that we had is we called all the principals and figured out how are they doing it, first of all, and offering them the chance to be part of the process, to see if there were any other areas that they would rather see us cut as opposed to that. And unanimously, the principals expressing themselves realized that if there was any area that we could realign, and I'd hate to use the word "cut" because we're not really cutting the people, to realign was that area without any loss of efficiency. Number one that is very clear is that the function of library will not cease at all. Out of the older schools that we have, only 11 schools are currently using the model of the library. They all have library aides, but they're using them in a different role. And so we talked, we actually asked the principals who are using, not using that model and using something else, to explain to their colleagues how they're doing it. For instance, one example of that is the Merkland. Another example is the McCalev, and they presented how they're doing it without using the library media. There's no loss. That function will continue to exist. They're handling it out via teachers, via paraprofessionals and so forth. Then we asked the 11 who are doing it whether they felt comfortable talking to their colleagues and see if they could replicate the models within their school.
Mm-hmm.
And they felt comfortable to do that. As with respect to the 23 aides library that we have, if you look at their qualifications, they all qualified, more than qualified, to be paraprofessionals. It also happens that almost every school we have would either have an opening coming up of paraprofessional, or they might have a sub who is now, temporary sub that is placed in the paraprofessional job. So not only that, we assure every single library aide that there will be no one losing their job as a person. They will all have the right to those positions that we have open, and furthermore, because of the, every school has either an opening or sub in that, they have the priority, and if they wanted to, they could remain right in their school. So they can say that too. And in most cases, in most cases, for those schools that are already using them in different ways, they're actually not going to be even using, I mean, doing something different. That's really between them and their principal, if they wish to continue doing whatever. We're not preventing the principal or forcing them to into a model. We're realigning the model because we realize that less than half of the schools were using them in a certain way, more than half were using them in a different way. This is one of those realignment that I think is incredible. Everybody really should look at it very carefully because it's a realignment that is a true efficiency, because no one is losing their job, no one. I guarantee you that, and they can work out, they still have flexibility to work with their principal, and we're not abandoning libraries. The libraries themselves, they have been defunded long ago. As you know, they used to have full-fledged librarians, and they no longer have them. So this is just a realignment with, just to be able to do the cuts that we needed to cut without missing, without affecting the efficiency of the schools.
Sure. So when I first get the budget, I always have two first-level questions. One, is it balanced? Are we living within our means? So check, looks like we are there. And two, is anybody losing their job? And I think that's also a check, but I do have a concern about these library aides. And just to take that one step further, I hear what you're saying, and I do think that we're actually making, giving these people a little bit more flexibility by making them paraprofessionals. I hear that. I, I hear that, but I, I'm concerned that maybe are we asking some people to do something that they feel, A, they're not qualified for, or B, that they're not comfortable with? Is there, can we, can we give people assurances that, you know, these people are library aides, that if they're being asked to go into a special ed class or something like that, where they don't feel like they have the ability to do that, can we give them assurances that that won't be the case?
We can. As you know, you can't put somebody in a special class unless they have the proper training. So our paraprofessionals who would work with special ed, we would expect them to have the proper training. So I think we will be tackling them on the one, on one basis. We have only, as I hear, seventeen people that we'll be working with, because three are retiring and three are not, you know, they're, they're subs. So we have seventeen professionals we'll be working with, and I'm sure we can address everyone's need and, and, and open the dialogue with them.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Following up on what Mr. Jennings was asking, so am I, do I get this correct? Would principals be, would they be able to decide if they wanted to have this person who's been their library aide for twenty-plus years or so, continue in that function in their building, as, but still, but be listed as a paraprofessional, but used in that capacity? Would that be a possibility?
I think, I think we can. I think it's really a discussion between the principal, and I'm sure we will entertain some discussion with the unions of the paraprofessionals to make sure that, that, you know, we're in compliance with all the contracts.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. Could you remind me of the differential, the pay differential, between the paraposition versus the library media aide?
Yes, Ms. Martin. In doing the research on this, we did discover that there are some library aides that are making more than our paraprofessionals, and we did discuss with them the possibility of retaining their current salary, but that's a discussion we're still working on at this time.
So, do you know the actual numbers of what that?
Yep. We are, are, the range-
General, I'm asking for an average salary and-
The, the range for paraprofessionals is anywhere from the low twenties to high twenties and even low thirties, but we do currently have some of those library maids, aides making thirty-four and thirty-two, I think were the top two. So we know that we do need to work with those people, but we had some different options that we were discussing with them.
Okay. My next question would be recognizing the, the staffing concerns around this, but also, how will we provide the coverage that's necessary in the libraries? What is that, that kind of plan B?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Martin, I think the best way to answer that, we will bring, on the next time we talk about this, we will bring the principals who are doing it and can give us a much clearer idea on how they do that.
Okay, and it would be great to have them come to discuss that. It would also be great that we have the, an understanding going in of what the HR implications are gonna be for this, I mean, what, what contractual changes we may have to make. I mean, obviously, if we've been in a situation where library media aides were doing jobs that weren't theirs, that were being used in different ways, that's a problem with job descriptions. So, moving forward, if we're gonna be pulling in different people to do that role, we're gonna need to be changing those job descriptions so they reflect the actual work that's being done. So it would be great if the principals could come and be very clear about what they're, how they're gonna fill that deficit.
Are you all set, Ms. Martin? Yeah. Mr. Gignac?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a number of questions. I will defer to our next meeting, but if you could, if you could provide that information for me and gather it for the entire committee. You know, the, the day school, I think, is something we've been talking about for a long time, and it's exciting that we're looking at the possibility of actually opening it. However, I think opening a new school warrants a little more than a one-page summary. So a full presentation, I think, is, is necessary to really talk about what's gonna go on there, what it's gonna look like, where is it gonna be housed, is a big concern that people are asking me. So a full plan, I think, is necessary. To get to the library aides, I understand that the positions will be being available for them. I will tell you, I will not support the elimination of library aides at all. I, I, I believe in their purpose, and I think moving people into positions that have served for a number of years in a specific role, moving them into another role just because they have the qualifications, I don't think is, is the right thing to do. You know, I, growing up and going to Lowell Public School System, I had librarians in those schools, as well as library aides, and as you mentioned, Mr. Superintendent, all the library, library media specialists have been eliminated, other than the high school, and I think that has hurt the school system. I really do think it's hurt the school system, and I think eliminating library aides will, will do the same. Also, on the clerks, it's, you have in the budget a document that there's a reduction of a clerical position, however you have an addition of a clerical position for the day school. So is it a, is it, is it a reduction or an addition? Is it, or is it flat?
Well, it's neutral.
It's neutral. So it's not really a reduction?
It's a reduction and an addition.
It's ju, same amount of FTEs?
Same FTE.
Okay, so it really probably shouldn't be listed as a decrease. Resource officers, you had mentioned that you had requested the city manager include these resource officers into the maintenance of effort agreement. What was the response? You can, you can answer now, or you can provide it later? Okay. In my next series of questions, tonight, Mr. Frisch, you provided us with some changes to the budget document that we received last week. I quickly scanned through it and noticed a number of changes that I'd like further information on, one of which is middle school teachers. It looks like the number went from eighty-nine FTEs to ninety, and obviously, that changed the, the total dollar amount. Why is that? Also, the special education teachers looks like is a decrease of one, and why is that? And where is that gonna be? And guidance councils look like there's a decrease of one, and, you know, an explanation on these changes, I think, is necessary. And, you know, then we'll open up to the, to a public hearing now, but I would recommend that after the public hearing, that we refer this to the finance subcommittee meeting to meet next Wednesday, to dig a little deeper, and to, and to get those responses, I think, would be appropriate. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussions, Mr. Hawley?
Thanks, Mayor. The Massachusetts Association of School Committees, last year, if you remember, this school committee, we fought against question two for charter schools, and now we know, last night at your meeting, you have like a home rule petition to go, see if you can get some money to pay for the charter schools. But when I look at all these formulas, I look at that foundation budget, and this year, it seems like they're telling us, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees are telling us that we should be calling our state reps about the foundation budget, and I don't think we should be. I think Lowell should stay out of that this year. I think it's a bad idea. I think it's the small towns that are pushing for that, because they pay a whole lot more on property taxes toward their budgets than we do. So I'm not sure if there's anything the school committee can do to help you out on the city's side about that home rule petition, but I think we should stay away from that foundation budget. That's what I, I'm trying to, I'm trying to deal with that. I don't understand it really that well, like Mr. Gignac does, but I think the foundation budget, if they affect that, that's gonna hurt Lowell. So I just wanted to say that, all in, that's all.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hawley. Mr. Orde?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think it is very complicated and confusing. I agree with you, Mr. Hawley, but the issue with the foundation budget is, is it's been, what, over twenty years since they came up with the foundation budget? What that number, what does it take in resources to educate a student? And that number is outdated. So, if my understanding is correct, the city has met its requirement. I mean, I was here, you know, during that time period of seventeen years when the city didn't meet its minimum requirement. As we know by the information, most of the money, the, the resources to educate our children comes from the state. I don't think we would lose that if we revisit the foundation budget. What it would do is identify that it's not enough resources to do the job. My concern with, well, actually, I have a number of concerns, and some of it, we, I look forward to getting more information on, but when you talk about that the city met its requirement, that's based on this foundation budget that is outdated, that is over, I think it's like twenty-four years old, right? Something, it's over twenty years. And that, the, the reason we are looking to move some of the SROs and those, the heating people off of our budget and back on the city, won't that then impact the amount of cash they give us, because they'll take more of it out of maintenance of effort? Is there that concern with doing that?
Well, we hope they don't do that, because I think we made it very clear in our letter that it's not that we want to cut the SROs. We wanna make this that clear. It's not that we do not need them, but we want consistency, because we have nine of them, six are charged to the maintenance of effort agreement, and three are charged directly to our cash. What we are suggesting to the city is that, because at the year-end, there is always cash remaining. If you remember, last year, we had, we, we had six hundred thousand, because, you know, salaries, you hire younger people and so forth, we had six hundred thousand dollars left at the end of the year, we turned over to the city. Now, if that were to be the, the scenario this year, the three SROs are about, the SROs that we're talking about, do not amount to, to not even anywhere near that, then the city could have easily absorbed that cost with that six hundred thousand and still have money left and not have affected our cash bottom line, because we survive on that cash bottom line. The, so, the raising, that's why we thought it was, it was a fair way of looking at it. We're not telling them that we don't want them. We're not cutting the SROs. That's not the message we're sending. We're saying, change the method of fun, of funding to allow more flexibility. As we all know, and you've been here before me, that every year, you will always have some money left over, and that is mostly because of the salary differentials, people leave you each year and so forth. So there will be opportunities for the city to pick that cost as part of the maintenance of effort agreement, and as a whole, it will be reflected in their contribution, and it would be recognized by the state as an additional contribution, because the SRO cost is, is an acceptable indirect cost.
Thank you. If I could just continue. So, regarding the positions that are, we're taking off the books because of attrition, director of alternative education, the psychologist, and the library aides, I'll get to that in a second, but how are we gonna manage without those positions? The director of alternative education, a psychologist? What, I mean, I'm assuming those are positions that we needed in our schools?
Well, let me tell you, first and foremost, when you have to balance a budget, you have to balance a budget, all right? Because we, as schools, have no authority, no tax levy authority. We're not like, you know, we could go out and just impose our, on the, on the city or on the state to give us more money. So we have to balance the budget. So when you do balance the budget, the first thing you look at, because as Mr. Jennings said earlier, we have the same two concerns. One is be balanced, two, that people do not lose jobs. So we look right away to the retirements, and then we bring in the professionals who work with that. So if it's a sped position, we would most likely be talking to Mrs. Jennifer, and we would bring her in and, and ask her, can you manage with this? And how would you do that? What's your plan for doing this? And in some cases, they can, and in some cases, they cannot, and they would tell us. There is no way you're gonna be able to do that. So in that case, we back off and say, all right, let's not worry about that, let's look at somewhere else. But when they look very hard, and they do, we rely on their advice to say, can you manage if we were to do that? Because if we're able, because if, when you have addition, you gotta get reduction to meet them. It's as simple as that. And you, so we look at, first and foremost, where the retirements are, and if they tell us that they can, they can figure it out, and they can, and they work with it, then we can, we can do that. In some cases, it might mean particularly in sped, like we had some cases where we had parish were, were cut out of this model. We didn't talk about them individually, because there's a whole bunch of pares of addition and restruction, and, and some reductions as well, but there were quite a few. And they really didn't have to do with, with, with the para who was retired or anything. It was just, pares, as, as you know, some, some of our pares are one-on-one. So if the student is no longer with us, or the student moved on to somewhere else, that para is no longer required, so that para can move in somewhere else. So there are a variety of reasons that, how we can do that. And, and usually, when we sit down with, with our, as I said, head of departments or principals, and they absolutely tell us that we cannot function efficiently if you don't replace such a teacher or a person, then we don't. Then we, we try to look somewhere else. So these that we are recommending today, were discussed at length with all the professionals within those departments, and they assured us. And I will be more than happy to ask them to come and present to us at, at your subcommittee meeting, to explain how each cut is going to be managed.
That would be very helpful. Thank you. And then, the last thing I wanna say, I did live through those cuts, as I know Ms. Martin did, when we lost the library media specialists. I, I think it's been a huge detriment. I think that the whole role of library and research has changed so much, that I, I would support this cut with the library aides, in that I think that the position itself was so limiting, but we need to really, I mean, to me, it seems like, shouldn't we be asking the city to not lessen the cash contribution, but at least make up the losses we've had because of the transportation increases and things like that? Because I, I think that we're, we're, we were already at bare bones, and I'm concerned about these cuts, and I think that the plan to save money on special education is absolutely the right way to go, but I don't think it's enough to offset how we're already so bare bones. And I, I, it's just very concerning to me.
We, if, if I may, we did ask the city, we did, we did contact the city in asking them to reconsider their decision to lower the net cash contribution. I know they're, I mean, they have reasons, I'm sure, of, they have their own challenges that they have to meet, but we, we did, we did our, you know, we did ask, and we, we're continuing dialogue with them. That's why when you asked us to provide you with information, that's a dialogue that we continue to have, as, as of today, we communicated again. Yes, it is of great concern. We will continue the dialogue, and we will, we will absolutely, hoping that we will get a chance to speak at their hearing of the budget as well. And I do not, I'm not gonna pretend that I know exactly the challenges that they face they have to deal with as a city, but I, I think our job is to make sure that they understand the challenges that we have to face as, as a schools, because last year, we cut tremendously, if you recall, and I'm sure every year we cut, but we do not have any fat in the budget. It, it is one thing that we made sure to eliminate, so we don't really have any of that. And when we, when we ended up the year with a surplus because of salary differentials and, and delayed purchases, whatever, it was turned over to the city. So it's not, schools are not even allowed to keep their own reserves, other than for salary obligations. They don't, we can't even keep them.
So that six hundred thousand, is that coming back to us?
No, it doesn't have to be, no.
But it could, if they made that decision?
Again, I'm, I'm not gonna pretend to know how the city does its business, but I'm sure, we, our job is to present our case to them and plead that, what, what we're facing, and then I'm sure they will be able to, to hear us and then take, take the proper decisions. Action.
Well, maybe it would be useful to come up with a list of what we would be able to do if we got the three million that were being cut. Like, where would that money go, and how, you know, what would be the impact of that in terms of where, how we go forward as a district? That would be useful. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martin, then, then, Mr. Hawley.
Thank you very much. Looking at the kind of overall presentation, recognizing that we'll get into a lot of the line items as we go through the, the actual hearing, just kind of the overall information, I wanna say that I think that there is some, recognizing how tight the budget is, I am extremely pleased to see the increase in math teachers, extremely pleased to see the STEM stipends. I think those are great investments. They're what we've been talking about and recognizing that we need to invest in. So I, I was really pleased to see those. I agree with my colleagues that the idea of moving towards the, the day school is absolutely a move in the right direction. Being able to pull together that expertise in district, I think, will be a huge benefit. I mean, it obviously speaks most directly to the least restrictive environment, which is what we always strive for, for our special education students. So I think that that's a really good move. I share some concerns around the library, library aides, and I think we'll be discussing that more as we go forward. So I, you know, those are the, the kind of immediate topics that aren't kind of specifically line item driven. The only other kind of overall question that I'd have is, just for, for the committee, for the public, to have an opportunity to hear about the actual process that we went through to get to this budget, the delays that happened- through to get to this budget, um, the delays that happened, the meeting cancellations, I think that we need to address that. Um, I'd want to hear kind of what the rationale was and what happened so that, you know, the, the budget wasn't presented on time, why that was, um, and, you know, kind of how we come to this point when we were assured that we were going to be receiving the initial presentation, April 12th. Um, we're now at May 3rd, and we're receiving this presentation. I don't know what the changes are, I give Mr. Gignac credit for having an opportunity to look through it, that we're waiting on our desk today. So I have no idea what's changed since we got this, you know, four or five days ago and today. So just kind of to better understand what changes have happened over that process, um, and what the, what the reasoning was, what the reason is for why it has been, why it has been pushed back timewise.
Thank you. Uh, real quick, there was one line item that bothered me, it was a parent liaison from the Pine, Pine School, and I know we only, uh, it's, I think it's a position that's definitely only in the thirty thousands, I don't have it in front of me, I think it's about thirty-four thousand, but I'm looking at that person, at that one line item, they put it in there years ago, and I've been in that school, my granddaughters, I watched this lady work, and I think if they lose that lady, that one parent liaison at that school, it'll be a big effect on it, on the whole school, as good as that school is. That's how many hours this woman puts into it, so I just wanted to bring that up before we go on, so my colleagues hear it. I just think that we've got to look at that position too. Thank you.
Okay, any, Ms. Martin, were you looking for a response now?
I was kind of hoping for one. I, I mean, if it's not available now, eh, it would be great at the, at some future point to understand that.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I didn't, I didn't think that you were looking for it now, because I do not have the response, because I'd like to know the response myself. I think the response will come to you from the legal department. Thank you.
I'll look forward to the response from the legal department regarding the dates.
We will, we will request it and have it come to you. Thanks.
Any further discussion? All right, so we'll, it's the chair's intent to open up the hearing, and then to suspend the hearing for this evening, because I'm assuming that, um, the committee's not ready to go through the whole budget this evening. So the next scheduled budget hearing would be Wednesday, the 10th, at 6:30. So would the subcommittee be meeting before that? How's that going to work out for the subcommittee if that's, if it's your intention, Mr. Gignac, to make a motion to, to refer this, the budget to the subcommittee?
Tuesday, can, can the subcommittee meet Tuesday? Do you mind? Or if we, if we need to meet before then, I think, or Monday?
We have, we have a executive session scheduled for Monday at six o'clock. So I guess the subcommittee could meet after that, um, or, or on Tuesday.
Do you have a recommendation, Mr. Simont?
If I may ask, Mr. Mayor, why wouldn't Wednesday work? I didn't catch that, I was talking.
Well, if we suspend, unless we go through the whole budget this evening, then the next scheduled budget hearing would be, the budget hearing is, would be scheduled to be continued for Wednesday at 6:30. Now, we can change that time to a, a later time, but that's why I brought it up, is just to get some direction on, on what the committee wants to do.
Yeah, why don't we just have a finance subcommittee meeting that evening earlier, and then, you know, to push back the hearing until 8:30 or so, that night?
This is a public hearing, it really should be earlier than-
Okay, yep.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I have a conflict next Wednesday, Wednesday and Thursday, I'm going to be out of town. Um, that doesn't mean you can't go on without me. But, uh, if we do have the executive schedule, uh, I'm sorry, the executive session scheduled for Monday, um, that shouldn't, I, I would think that's an hour, uh, from six to seven. Maybe we could have, since we're all going to be here, maybe we could have a hearing starting then.
Starting when?
At seven on Monday.
The subcommittee meeting?
Uh, well, yeah, either the subcommittee meeting or the-
We have executive session Monday at six.
Right.
I have an engagement at eight.
Ah, okay.
On Monday. How does Thursday, does Thursday work to do the budget?
I'm, I'm out Wednesday and Thursday, but go, go forward with that first session with me, I'll catch it on rerun.
Okay, and Ms. Doherty?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. I think what, I am a member of the finance subcommittee, but why not just have the presentation for the whole committee? Does it have to be the finance subcommittee? Because I, I imagine that everybody else who can be there, I know, uh, Mr. Gendron has a commitment, but everybody else wants to be there anyway, does it have to be through the finance subcommittee? We could just do the whole committee on the Wednesday that we had scheduled.
That, that's fine with me, Mr. Mayor, that's, that's fine with me. Originally, we had scheduled a, a budget presentation, a finance subcommittee meeting, and a budget hearing. So that's kind of the way I was thinking we would operate, but that's, that's fine, we can have a full committee meeting.
I just think in terms of the time-
Sure.
-we've lost some time, so-
Sure.
That would be my recommendation, and if the chair is fine with that.
It sounds like a good thing. The only other thing I would suggest is that the, the, the subcommittee meet after executive session on Monday? I mean, everybody's going to be there anyways, so you could do that, does that work?
That meeting I, is not going to be televised, as far as I know. We were going to meet wherever they could get a space. If the finance subcommittee meets, that needs to be televised.
We can, we can make it happen, whatever we meet.
Okay, you'll find a location that we can have executive session, and then do the finance subcommittee. I'm fine with that, because we will be there, and Mr. Gendron, you can make that meeting.
Okay. So is everybody good with that?
Yes.
All right, so, once we suspend this public hearing, it would, we take it up again Wednesday at 6:30?
No.
Here?
Monday.
Monday.
No.
Oh, no, Wednesday, Wednesday.
No. Right?
Wednesday is the actual budget hearing.
Wednesday for the budget hearing, the subcommittee's a different deal, so it's, okay.
Mr. Frisch, can you repeat that?
Yes. If, if there's no further discussion, we'll open up the hearing for, the public hearing on the school committee budget for FY 2017, 2018. Is there anybody which is speaking favor on the budget? In favor? In favor? In favor?
I'm not quite sure if I'm in favor or not, but I, I have to take a position, I guess, uh, to at least start the conversation. And I want to follow up on some of the, the questions that came up about the net school spending. Nineteen ninety-two net school spending was established as part of the Ed reform movement. I remember, because at the time, Mark Roosevelt was one of the authors of the document, we get, had him come over to the Smith Baker Center to speak to the teachers back then, and talk about the whole issue. Was that?
Twenty-five.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, anyhow, make a long story short, at that particular time, obviously, there were ramifications of the net school spending requirement, um, because for the first time, cities and towns across the Commonwealth found that instead of money coming directly as aid to cities and towns, some of it was going to be diverted to Chapter Seventy money to make sure to, to equalize the playing field. As part of the McDuffie case, this lawsuit that took place back in nineteen ninety-two that created the Ed reform movement. He also explained at that time, too, that there would be accountability measures, including testing, that would be part of it, but it started very slow. Now it's become very accelerated, very annoying, and not beneficial to systems. However, that's a debate that I don't necessarily need to get into right now. I will tell you, though, that that did kick off in a number of activities where municipalities, or leaders in municipalities got together and tried to find the best way to try to capture as much of that Chapter Seventy money as they possibly could. In this city alone, I remember, it was not that many years ago, that the city attempted to charge off the cost of maintenance of the parks to the school department because they said the kids played in the parks. Those things came, you know, and it was a, a kind of a wink and a nod on some of these things, and that's why I really appreciate Mr. Hoy's motion about looking at the maintenance of effort agreement. Because I have no question, I, just, just a few months ago, I think Ms. Doherty was on, uh, the, the, on the cable news with, uh, the, uh, city manager. And there was a discussion about the city manager saying that they were charging the school system for plowing the snow on the street in front of the schools. Now, that's not legitimate, I don't think, in anybody's mind. And it'll be interesting to find out what is legitimate and what isn't. But I do want to carry it further, because this is further in the conversation, had to do with the foundation budget. Two years ago, there was a committee, oversight committee, that looked at this and said that at that point, the state was underfunding public education by probably one point two billion dollars. If you talk to Eileen Dunhill, she will probably tell you it's double that, if not triple, at this particular time, because of all the additional mandates coming down by DESI, including additional testing, uh, requirements for technology in order to push the testing, which happens to be, you know, the, the commissioner's sort of favorite, since he was on the board of PAC, uh, publishing, that's making a fortune on the testing model. But the fact of the matter is, you've got to be aware that that costs money. And I have no question that in, in many ways, probably the estimate here is overstated. But even if it's not, even if it's not, is the funding that we're getting sufficient for the job that we're doing? And I would say, no, absolutely not. The state recognizes, and this, this, this group that would, the oversight committee, recognized very early, I mean, and strongly, that there was a major underfunding component coming from the state, and we rely on that state money, which means someone needs to make it up. Now, I'm actually, I'm very, very proud of what we do in Lowell. When you turn around, when I walk and go to the different places, I go to, you know, national conferences, not in Washington, with AFD, I talk to my colleagues from across the country. I mean, they look at Massachusetts as really the pearl. And then we explain that two-thirds of our schools, for the first time in our history, are level one or level two, and I have some real problems with the leveling component because it relies too much on test scores. But the fact of the matter is, if that the ma, the matrix they're going to use, damn it, we're doing well. Two-thirds of our schools are level one or level two. I was proud five years ago, and we got to a point where it was fifty-fifty. Right? Fifty percent were one and two, and the rest were C. But we're making this kind of budgeting decision by the city, it's, it's, you know, it's out of your hands in a lot of ways, and it's unfortunate. In a lot of communities, the school committee and the, and the superintendent put together a budget, and then they submit it to the city manager in the, in the city council. Here, it's the other way around. You're told how much money you have to use. And because of that in the past, the funding for the schools has been erratic at best, using the school department coffers as the piggy bank to hold money or take it away in a whisper. This year, three million dollars. Not right. I'm asking you to advocate for the school department, you're the elected officials for the school committee, and I understand some of you have certain loyalties and so on to the city, I mean, that, we understand all of that. But the fact is, this budget is not sufficient. We should not be looking at cutting positions that could be considered valuable, particularly in some individual schools. Would you be happy, or the public be happy, in this city, if we told our teachers, you know, don't worry about level one or level two, just shoot for three, because that's the average out there? Would we be happy to say to our kids, hey, don't put too much effort into this thing? Get a D, that's all you need to pass? Of course not! So if we're going to expect our schools to excel, and they are excelling, then we need to be able to back them in the activities of the, the practitioners that work every day in those schools. We have to be able to have the resources to continue that good work. And I'm asking you, as the representatives of the public, of our schools, to go to bat, to go to bat to the city council. I think you might find more people on the city council in support of additional funding for the schools, perhaps even the city manager. I'm glad the motion passed, Mr. Hoy. It gives us a chance, transparency is extremely important in determining really how far they are, if they are indeed paying more than what the net sco, sco, you know, numbers are numbers. But, and something can be attributed as an expense of the school system and not really be the focus of it. I mean, we had two plumbers that were on our payroll. How absurd was it to have two plumbers on the payroll and have the city telling them what to do every day? The intention was to get immediate relief for issues that we needed in our schools. All I'm simply saying is, why not, I, I'm asking you, and I'm asking you for the two thousand employees of the school system, a little over that, demand. I'm going to demand a view, I'm going to do it in a nice way, but I'm, all the time, exactly, Mr. Gendron. But the point is, we need to, we need to advocate for our schools, that they're going to continue to be good schools. And we have to advocate for reasonable, you know, treatment of our employees. Am I, do I have a, there's something wrong with this thinking that we're talking about a potential tax increase for the first time in a number of years in Lowell? And that whatever that number is, all the money's going to the city side and not the school department side, even though two-thirds of the budget of the city of Lowell is for the schools? How is that reasonable? How is it reasonable there would be a tax increase? And yet, the entity that really has about two-thirds of the budget, and certainly two-thirds of the employees, wouldn't benefit from it at all? There's something wrong in the thinking. All I'm asking you to do, you know, and I'm sure other teachers will ask you to do that, other teachers and other school employees will ask you to do that, to take that responsibility seriously, and don't put it maybe in the future, maybe even now. Put the budget together that you think you need. Fight for that budget. Let the city manager and let the city people, and the, and the city council tell you they can't do it. But at least it's a discussion. At this point, we make it too easy, because all you do is have a number and you try to accommodate that budget that's being told to you, which this year alone was cut by three million, as articulated earlier. It's not fair. It's not right. Now, there seems to be, there were some cuts that were made last, at the end of the fiscal year, with the superintendent, where the city manager tried to, did get six hundred thousand, but he also tried to get two point four million that had been encumbered but not spent. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, for fighting that battle. You saved us two point four million dollars that went into technology, if I remember right, in that, that expenditure primarily. I'm not talking, I'm talking about asserting yourselves as elected officials who are here to protect the interest of the schools. I'll be glad to be an ally, or I'll be glad to remind you of this again and again. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else which is speaking favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing done, we'll suspend the hearing until Wednesday at 6:30?
I wanted to speak, not necessarily in favor of-
I'm not done, this is just the, the hearing's still going on, we're going to do the opponents, we're just doing, uh, okay? All right. So we'll suspend the hearing on behalf of the, the proponents until next Wednesday at 6:30. Now we'll open up the, the hearing for those who wish to speak in opposition to the budget.
My name's Janine Amaduri, I'm one of the teachers over at the high school, I spell it like Ms. Durkin's name there. Um, this is the first time I've come to one of the school committee meetings to speak, so thank you for clarifying how it works for me. First, I wanted to say, I don't, I don't envy the task of trying to, trying to make everything work out financially, and trying to figure out, how do you make everything work with a smaller budget regi, relative to the number of students? But I agree that we have to keep fighting for more funding for the schools. Every year, our public schools are asked to do more with less, more students, less funding per student, the cost of living goes up, the cost of running a school goes up, and we're asked to do more with not even the same amount of, of funding for basic necessities. Our teachers are asked to do more and more every year. Last year, I spent more than a thousand dollars of my own money on supplies for my classroom, a lot of that was basic supplies like whiteboard markers, or when the heat wasn't working at the high school, I bought an electric radiator for my classroom, just to make it bearable for myself and the students. So for the city to be able to just say, oh, we're not going to properly fund the schools, I know that this is what, what cities have been doing for decades, and what all of you have been fighting, all of you have been fighting for proper funding for the schools, and we can't give up now. I know that many of you have had, um, your children come up through the public schools, and I'd like you to ask, I'd like to ask you to continue to fight for all of the Lowell public schools, students, the same way you would if your kids, if all of you had kids there right now. Would you please continue to fight for all of our kids? That's, because that's what we teachers do every day. Thank you very much.
Thank you. (applause) Is there anybody else who would like to speak in opposition?
My name's Erin Hebert, and I am one of the 17 library aides, so you guys, I apologize if I get emotional, it's the passion, I'm not going to agree or disagree that our contract or our job description fits us, it doesn't, for me, I go to a job, and I'm not just going to do the bare minimum, I go above and beyond, Mr. Hoey can attest to that, the first book event that the schools held recently, how many cases, he held the door for me, I don't know how many times I went by him, I, just to say, I got $5,000 worth of books that day, for the school, last Tuesday was probably one of the hardest days, last week, we had book fair, and at the Pine, we run two book fairs, and it's probably one of the best times of my, my year, because I get to see the passion that I've helped inspire with the kids, to come in those doors and get pumped for book fair, if you haven't been to the Pine during one of my book fairs, Mr. Hoey's grandchildren can probably attest to it, it's not your typical book fair, last week was camp themed, so the outside of my library was decked out, the inside was decked out, every day was a dress up day, nobody else in the school sets that up, that's me, I know our contract, our job description limits us, but that doesn't limit the people in the jobs, they limit themselves, okay, I, I'm not in this job, I don't think anybody in education is in the job for a paycheck, honestly, I'm there for the kids, and my concern, I'm blessed, I'm more than blessed, I'm lucky to have a position and get to stay at the Pine, but how is it going to affect the students, they have the choice now to come to the library, be pumped, do something fun, yes, I don't get to teach the class on my own, but the staffs, the teachers stay in there, they hang out in the corner, they get to do their grading for the 30 minutes of time that I have scheduled, that I have scheduled myself, for those classes to come to, and the kids get to pick out a book, and if they've done everything that I've asked them, we get to do freeze dance, and it's the best part of my day, because they leave that library pumped, and when we have MCAS, because of schedule, because of rooms, we have to use the library, and they're like, Ms. Hebert, do we get to have library today? And I'm like, I can't, and they're like, come on, you know, to see that passion for the kids, where's that going to go, when somebody else has to pick it on, teachers already have to take on so much, so let's just say, we ask the content literacy teacher to be the ones to check out the book, okay, kid, you've got 10 minutes, because we have a 45-minute class period, you've got 10 minutes to quickly check out books, and then we get to the next task, it's making it just like another class, it's just like another assignment, you're taking that passion that the kids currently have from reading, and making it a quick task, okay, you're taking it away from them, and that's where my concern is, trust me, you guys have a big task ahead, and honestly, I would rather you cut my position than another teacher, my concern is how it's going to affect my kids, and that's how I look at it, I have 500 kids, I work 365 days with kids, I'm the program director for Camp Massapeau through Lowell, so, we finish school on a Thursday, I'm at camp on Friday, working with 300-plus kids, because that's what I'm here to do, and that's my concern, how is cutting those positions going to affect the kids, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak in opposition, 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 hearing done, we'll suspend the hearing for those who wish to speak in opposition until next Wednesday at 6:30, so that'll conclude the public hearing deliberations for this evening, if we can move on with the agenda, we have five items for convention conference requests, we have a motion to approve all five by Mr. Hoey, second by Mr. Gignac, discussion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted, oh, I'm sorry, roll call.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DeCaro?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
That concludes the regular agenda, do we motion adjourn?
Could I add one thing, Mr. Mayor, don't get up yet, Mr. Frisch, just quickly, a couple of housekeeping things, first, the online agenda, so, we previously had been getting the packet in the Dropbox, and, you know, I'm all in favor of saving trees, and, you know, I can, I'm tech savvy, I can handle that, I like it, recently, we went to this system where we get an agenda with links in it, that we click to get to the documents, and that works great, as long as the internet in the building is working, so, you know, I like to be, I've read it all, but I'd like to be able to refer to it at the meeting, and if we can't get to it in the meeting, it's, it's, it hampers us, so, I'd like to suggest we go back to the Dropbox, so that we can download that before the meeting, and have it available on our computers or iPads for the meeting.
Mr. Superintendent?
Yeah, we, we have the same concern, this is not a system we chose, this is the system that we are on board with the city, in order for us to do that, we will, we would like to do that, to get a different system, we would have to bring to you a motion to, or permission to enter to purchase our own system.
Well, worst case, then we can do printed copies, you know, we can do-
This system doesn't, for instance, this system, it doesn't really allow you the same flexibility as the old one, that if, if you wanted to make the slightest change, you have to remove the whole agenda, and put it back, in order to print the system, you have to first publish the agenda.
Yeah.
It's, it's very, very, very rigid, and we, and they know about it, and it's been a nightmare, and we were talking about that, about trying to get a different system, it's not, it shouldn't be that expensive, but something that is a lot more flexible, allows you to print and create PDF ahead of time, and even distribute them before, you know, online or print them, and make it a lot easier for everyone.
Even if we had printed copies on our desks when we come here at night, I mean, I would want to do that, but, but that would be a last resort, and one other thing I'd like to add, you know, a couple weeks ago, we had the state championship hockey team tonight, we had the academic Knott's Bowl winners, I think it's only fitting that at the next meeting, we go to the cast of The Wizard of Oz, and invite them down here, maybe we can do a little Somewhere Over the Rainbow before we begin the meeting.
Great.
Thank you.
Mr. DeCaro?
I could, thank you, I've been asked, that if we are going to ask them for, to do a spotlight, that it kind of get pushed into June sometime, because they're out straight with doing different things, and concerts, and other presentations, so, it's a hectic, hectic next couple of weeks, so, if we can hold off the-
Whatever works for them, I just want to make sure they get their due recognition, because the show was awesome.
I agree, I agree, it was a great show.
Okay, anything else, Chair would entertain a motion adjourned, by Ms. Dougherty, second by Mr. Gendron, all in favor, all opposed, stand adjourned.